Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:27. All mics are hot and we are streaming on all platforms.
If they want to hear from you, we'll call you up, but you should be okay.
Well, that's my old stomping ground there. And I mean stomping.
I'll give it to you.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Having appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I'd like to call the Monday, October or December 23rd, 2024 Committee to hold to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you take the role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Present.
Alderwoman Connolly. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, accor, Miss President.
Thank you, Clerk. I accept the motion for the approval of the December 10th, 2024 Committee.
Move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I think we have a presentation, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening. I'm Jill Steiner. I'm the president of the ICON, which is Independent Neighborhood, Independent Coalition for Our Neighborhoods. And this is the 10th year that we've given out the Good Neighbor Awards. And one of our recipients was unable to attend our ceremony earlier in November, so I want to make sure that we honor him tonight. I do want to state, the individual award this year went to Jane Ford. The business award was awarded to Humphreys Market. And the community organization was the Senior Center for Central Illinois. But we also have a public service award, and I want to have Nate step forward because we would like to present this award to him. I just want to share with you, in his past roles and public works and his current role, he really hasn't stepped out of the limelight of serving the public and serving neighborhoods. Being available, answering questions, and really making sure that we get the answers we need. And he's just so detailed in listening to an individual need, not only with ICON, but I also serve on the Disabilities Commission. And he has been a steadfast attendee of that to make sure that people with disabilities in this community get sidewalks where they need to, buffs, you know, just whatever we need to. And he makes sure that that's one of the priorities when he was in Public Works and Director, to be able to make sure it does, and he's continuing that. Even though sometimes it's not his role, he still returns emails and calls to lots of people. And so we want to make sure that in front of all of you and citizens of Springfield, that we share the fact that he is an exemplary public servant, and we wanted him honored today.
And he played football at Landfair.
Yeah. Nate must have made some changes.
Steven wants your picture.
All right. Thank you, Val, and congratulations, Nate.
Congratulations, Nate.
In the spirit of giving, can I get a motion to move 2024-538 to the front?
So move.
Second.
All those say aye? Opposed, nay? Any discussion? All right. Val, 2024, or City, Mr. Clerk, would you read 2024-538?
An ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Sengman Donuts LLC doing business as Mellow Cream Donuts for financial assistance for the property located at 525 North Grand Avenue East. Utilizing central area tax increment finance funds in the amount of $10,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move consent.
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion? Sorry, Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I just had one quick question for Corporation Counsel or Ms. Azal. Are we, I noticed that this is using the downtown tip, should it be Enos Park?
I was coming forward to tell was that on the fact sheet, it says Enos Park. It's the Enos Park tip.
Okay, thank you.
Just not the downtown, so just an error there.
Thank you, ma'am.
But that's what I was coming up for, so, yeah.
Alderman Henauer.
Yeah, I just want to tell Val, wish Val the best. This is her last meeting, and she's going out smiling, I can tell, so. So congratulations and enjoy your retirement, and I'm sure we'll see you around town.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Someone who will shall remain nameless dared me to come up here and say, "I changed my mind." I said, "I can't even utter those words," so. So, thank you. It has been a pleasure to serve. You know how much I love this community and how much I love working with the people in this community, so thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, Val.
Also, do I have a motion to put?
Oh, we got to vote. We got to vote.
Do we vote?
Yeah.
We did.
Consent.
Want to consent?
I didn't know we all voted.
I think we did already.
Aye.
Can I have a motion for, to hold 224-539, 224-540, and 224-541?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Next, we have ordinances tabled, the remaining committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
2024-239, 2024-333.
Anybody want to do anything on these? All right. Now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the ordinances for C W L P?
2024-512, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in the amount of $460,000 under contract number UW24-23. Power and activated carbon with ARQ Purifications LLC, FKA CarPure Technologies LLC, for a total amount not to exceed $920,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
And any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
2024-513, an ordinance authorizing additional one-year contract extensions and additional funding in the amount of $166,500 under contract number UW22-11-67. Carbon dioxide with Lindy Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $666,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
2024-514, authorizing an additional one-year contract extension and additional funding in the amount of $453,000 under contract number UW24-11-71. Feric sulfate with Chimera Water Solutions Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $906,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
2024-515, an ordinance accepting bid and authorizing contract UW25-03-08. Lead service line replacement FY2025/26 with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating in an amount not to exceed $2,806,045 for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Rockford.
Doug, please. With the budget and everything coming up, are we going to have a rundown as to where we're going to tack, and I'm sure this money's coming from like a grant, maybe?
Yeah, this is the grant. This is the one that we've been talking about in the, for the census tracts in wards two and three. And we've had some public meetings on and stuff like that to try to get those wards kind of involved and let them know, our customers know that this money is available for them. Because this is, this is to do their side of the work.
Okay, so this is, this is going to be a two-year, two-year contract, so to speak?
Yes.
25, 26?
Correct.
And also, but I know it's a little shy of a year since we raised rates, but we're going to have some kind of update on monies that have come in?
Sure.
To see where we're at for come budget time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, Doug, please. So when you say their side of the work, you're speaking of the residents?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right, Mr. Clerk.
2024-516, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE24-30 with Renacent Incorporated for Phase One of dismantle, teardown of the Dahlman and Lakeside power plants in the amount not to exceed $2,291,722 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Williams?
No, that's so.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Doug, real quick, is this, is this going to take place soon? More sooner than later?
This is, yeah, I mean, this is going to be taking place starting in like in the spring, more or less. As soon as the weather cooperates, they'll start doing it. It's not, I mean, it's not the entire plant.
No, no, no.
It's just some key pieces, like Lakeside Smoke Stack, the precipitator, some duct work, kind of some ancillary things around Lakeside and Dahlman.
Lot of scrap in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why, you know, the number's a little bit lower than.
But I mean, you know, see if we can get some of that money out of that scrap.
Oh, that's part of the contract. Yeah, they've accounted for all the scrap and as far as their pricing goes, otherwise the price would be a lot higher.
Right. Thank you.
Hang on, Alderman Gregory?
I was just going to say, Educative Home Fund 102.
I'm sorry, what was it?
What fund we taking this out of?
Uh, yeah, this is just coming out of our electric fund.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Redpath, is there asbestos problems in those buildings?
No, I mean, if there is on the precipitator, I mean, of course, they would abate that, but I don't think there is.
Would that be part of this expense?
Yes, if they had like, if they had like lead paint or something, they'd have to remove the lead paint per procedures before they could do it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
We have a motion for consent. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
2024-517, an ordinance accepting bid and authorizing execution of contract UE25-10-34. Line clearance services for two-year term with the Electric Division with Wright Tree Service Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $6,500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
First, can we get the motion in second first?
Motion for debate.
Okay. We have a second on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, on this, on this tree line service, I know we do, we've been doing some of these, and I can tell you how we're cutting them is just ugly. This Y-shaped thing that we get sometimes on some of them, why aren't we just taking them down? I mean, I, I.
This comes to the cost. I mean, so we're at 6.5 million for two years. The taken downs, you're going to, you're going to see the cost go up. That's the only reason that they don't go that far with it. Sometimes the trees, you know, they look a little spare, sparse, I guess you might say, you know, once they do it, but then it kind of grows back. So they, they, there's still, you know, some shades, some benefits to having them there.
I can say, I think that some of them, I agree with you, some of them may like grow back and stuff, but some of them are in such bad shape anyway when we, when we have attacked them. It just really seems that it would be better served to take it all the way down and maybe work with Public Works and the tree program, and we got to replace, replace something that would be a little smaller. And that's just my honest opinion of what we're seeing, because we're doing a lot of them, and, and, you know, I guess somewhere in my mind, maybe we can do less and, you know, make it look better rather than doing so many. But, you know, that's just my opinion, Doug. I appreciate you, sir.
Yeah.
Alderman Henauer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What, how much did this go up from the last contract we had, Doug? It seems like, seems like this is.
I can tell you, I don't know exactly what the thing was, but it was, if we would have been able to extend it another year, we would have saved 5% versus going out for bids. That's, at least that's what they shared with us, because it was, it would have been, let's see, it's gone up, 5%, so it'd be 3. It was 8% that it went up from last year, so I guess just reverse the math and that would be the number. But if we would have just extended the contract, it would have been 3% increase.
And I do agree with, we need to look at, you know, we keep cutting these trees down and they keep growing back in, and this is going to continue, it's going to continue to go up. And I know Ameren over in Missouri, they, they do not allow trees underneath their power lines. And it's for this reason, because of the cost associated, and it might be something we need to look at down, you know, down the road. Even if we allow smaller trees, you do the smaller trees that don't grow up in that high into the power line, and then that way, we don't have this revolving cost every, you know, how often do we go back to a place? Every four, five?
Every, about every five, roughly.
So every five, it's just continuing, and we get, I think a lot of us have all gotten calls about the way they've cut trees, you know, and they, they don't look the nicest and that. And so I think we need to really kind of look going forward at a way to alleviate some of this cost. And I think that would be, we need to talk about maybe looking at taking them down, like Sean said, and, and, you know, I think it's, it's something to look into. Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, and Alderman, I agree with you, but they're on 11th Street right now, and it's Asplin, so it says here Wright Tree Services. Are they out of the contract right now, or are they still cutting for the city? Wright?
Right now, it'd be, it'd be Asplin.
Okay, Asplin's in there.
Yeah.
And so, and again, they, they, they wire these trees out, and you've got one big branch with about 10 smaller branches on it. You get some, some ice or something, you know, and it falls in the road, I think if they just took that one big branch down, you know, I don't know how much more of a cost it's going to be. And secondly, does AT&amp;T come in and, and help us out on costs for?
No, not for their, not their stuff. They don't, they don't care pretty much, the interference on their lines.
So we go in and do, we're doing, doing work for two, for us and in the Ameren.
Right. I mean, the branch is the difference. The, you know, if a branch touches their line, it's not a big deal.
No, no, no.
That's the, that's a little bit of the difference is why, you know.
But no, I just, I know we just signed a contract with like three different vendors to come in and help with streetlights, changing out streetlights. You know, wasn't Asplin one of them too? Asplin and?
They, yeah, it's a different, it's a different company of Asplin, yes. Yeah.
But again, we got, so we've got, you know, a contract for our streetlights, now we, and another one for Wright, Wright Tree Service.
Right, and it seems like it swaps about every contract between that, Asplin and Wright.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. Doug, this contract contains, there's someone at the Tree Service who's a certified arborist who decides how to cut the trees and what to do with them, correct?
So, yeah, so the companies, whether it's Asplin or Wright, they have, they have trained employees. They do it per industry standard. So they've, they've gone to arborist schools, and they, but they also look at what the industry does for, you know, to basically to make the right cuts to the tree, so the tree does not, so it can live.
Right.
Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that not, that every single situation, there might be, maybe there's other issues with the tree that caused it to die in conjunction with that. But usually, it's, it's, you know, they're, they're always trimming though, per those standards, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we have a motion on the floor for debate debates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Clerk.
2024-518, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of a contract with Airgas USA LLC in an amount not to exceed $641,360 for the purchase of hydrogen and the rental of low-pressure storage tanks for the Dahlman Generating Station for a five-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Of Public Works.
We have a motion. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Mr. Clerk.
2024-519, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW25-10-42. North Grand Water Main Replacement with E.L. Pruitt Company in an amount not to exceed $4,296,161 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
2024-520, an ordinance approving a Fourth Amendment to the proprietary software license agreement with CGI Technologies and Solutions Incorporated for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for Public Works?
Public Works, 2024-521, an ordinance approving the final plan for Thiale Minor Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-522, a resolution to use MFT rebuilt funds for supplement number two for construction phase engineering services for PE3 for the downtown traffic signal modernization, one-way streets conversion project, MFT section number 19-00489-00-TL for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-523, an ordinance approving the agreement between the City of Springfield and the Illinois Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for usable segment six VIA of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of adopting motion number one or amendment number one, say aye?
Aye.
Against?
Motion for consent as amended.
Second.
Any discussion on the amended ordinance? Alderwoman Nottriano.
Thank you, Chair. What is this amendment doing?
So we were still in the process of final negotiations when this was put on first read. So the amendment finalizes the actual amount after our discussions and then also attaches the agreement that's been agreed upon by all parties in principle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the amended ordinance, please vote aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-524, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Springfield of Illinois Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for usable segment VIB of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Go ahead, Alderman.
Just real quick, I assume it's the same thing. We just, it was still in negotiation when this came through.
That's right. It's the same parties. This is just a different segment of the same program.
Thank you.
So those in favor of accepting amendment number one?
Aye.
Vote aye.
Aye.
Against? No?
Motion for consent as amended, Chair.
Second.
Any discussion as amended? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. There, Clerk.
2024-525, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Springfield, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the Illinois Midland and Railroad Incorporated for usable segment BIA of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-526, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Springfield and Sengman County for usable segment IIIC of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Do, any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-527, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW25-11-49 with Luby Equipment Services for the purchase of one Tacucci TB395W wheeled excavator in an amount not to exceed $192,620 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
2024-528, an ordinance notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that an additional $343,920 motor fuel tax funds may be spent for maintenance of streets and highways under the Illinois Highway Code for a calendar year 2025 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-529, an ordinance approving change order number one with Kenny Contractors Incorporated for the FY2025 concrete patching program by authorizing an additional $599,382.26 for a total amount not to exceed $1,533,957.26 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-530, an ordinance authorized supplemental number two for an agreement with Knight E/A1 Incorporated for construction phase engineering services, PEIII for the downtown traffic signal modernization and one-way streets conversion project, MFT section number 19-00489-00-TL and authorizing additional expenditures in the amount not to exceed $54,869 for a total amount not to exceed $526,806 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Against?
General City Business, 2024-531, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D local licenses by one for Good Time Air Incorporated doing business as Main Gate Bar and Grill located at 2143 North 11th Street.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Against?
2024-532, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for Main Gate Bar and Grill Incorporated doing business as Main Gate Bar and Grill located at 2143 North 11th Street.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Against? Thank you.
2024-533, an ordinance authorizing payment of $1,400,000 for settlement of Sengman County Court case. for settlement of Sangamon County Court case 22-la-84 Kevin Hefington versus the City of Springfield ETAL.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Against?
Twenty twenty-four, five thirty-four. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance and execution of a settlement agreement between the City of Springfield and Tower Capital Group LP.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Against?
Twenty twenty-four, five thirty-five. An ordinance authorizing additional payment of $20,000 for a total amount not to exceed $120,000 to Hinshaw Culberson LLP to defend general liability claims for the City of Springfield for the Office of Corporation Council.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four, five thirty-six. An ordinance approving the appointment of Amy Raising as Director of Office and Planning and Economic Development for the City of Springfield.
Move for debate.
Do we have to go to debate on this? Move to debate.
Second. Any discussion? I see Amy Raising here. Would you want to say anything?
Think about it.
Packers around tonight, remember.
Chair, they did win last night.
Unfortunately.
My husband is a Vikings fan and our alderman has made some kind of threats against what's in our yard sometimes, so I'll just say that publicly now. I'm happy to answer. Any questions, Chair?
No, I think we're good. No questions.
A little bit about myself.
Yeah, just a little background's fine.
Yeah, I actually just, somebody called me a young lady the other day and I will remind you that I just had my 35th college anniversary from graduation. I know this because my brother and sister-in-law were married the same day, so my husband-to-be came to my celebration in a tux. So whenever they celebrate their anniversary that year is the, how long I realized I've been out of college. So I have a degree in communications and I've spent most of my career in nonprofit agency administration, which means I've spent years and years finding resources and building relationships. And I've had the privilege in the last year to work here at the city to observe and to learn more about the municipal process, which I was not as familiar with. But I've been managing the grants on behalf of the city and working with all of the departments. So I feel like I've gained some real insight with each of the departments and had the pleasure of working with all of the directors here on the campus as well. So that's a little bit more about me.
Alderman Gregory.
I would just like to say thank you for coming up, speaking and telling us a little bit about yourself. I am not about to ask you a thousand questions tonight, but after Christmas we'll talk a little bit and I look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes. So is the department fully staffed?
We are not fully staffed, but we have someone joining our team replacing Kayla Graven, who moved on to a state position. That person is joining our team and I did sit in for the interviews, was able to help Director Yezel pick that person, and they'll be starting January 6th.
Is that the only vacancy?
There will be a vacancy in the Grants Department if if I'm appointed. Again, we'll be promoting that position and I do have a position that we're hiring for for a community program specialist for the Grants Department, which I just did the interviews on.
Great. Any other questions? All right, Amy, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to debate, discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty twenty-four, five thirty-seven. An ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $56,000 to Flock Group Incorporated for the Flock Safety Condor PTZ cameras to be funded by the COPS Equipment and Technology Grant, number one five J COPS dash twenty-four dash GG dash zero two one five seven dash T E C P, an organized retail crime grant, number twenty-five dash zero one five five O R C, for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Twenty twenty-
I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman Williams.
Oh, I thought, no, I don't have anything. I thought it disappeared after.
I think Alderman Rockford pushed it, so go ahead, Clerk. Clerk?
Yeah, I didn't know you had to cancel yourself out. Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Twenty twenty-four, five forty-two. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Number Nine, Firemen and Oilers, from October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Against?
Twenty twenty-four, five forty-three. An ordinance authorizing execution of tentative collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Number Nine, from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2028.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Against? Next is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before this committee? Seeing none, next is new business. Is there any new business to come before this committee? Alderwoman, purchase.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to tell everyone Merry Christmas. I'll see y'all before the New Year and I got my best gift today. I just left St. John's Hospital from watching my goddaughter be born.
Hey, congratulations.
Well, tis the season.
Yeah, tis the season to be jolly.
Oh, ho, ho. Alderman Rockford.
So today is my mother's 100th birthday. She's in heaven, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Haven't had you around a while yet.
Yeah.
Happy Festivus.
Now, it's, we go executive session?
Yes, we need to go into executive session.
People, address the council first.
Motion for executive session for?
Two C eleven litigation.
Two C eleven litigation.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Against? We do?
You have six. You're okay.
Yep, we're ready.
Can I have a motion to reconvene the committee, the whole meeting?
The move.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now is the time for citizens who have signed up to address the committee. Mr. Clerk, are there any citizens who wish to address the committee?
Alice Ramey.
Sure.
Okay, next would be Jacqueline Jarque.
She's in the room.
Okay, the next person is Jill Steiner, and she already spoke.
She spoke.
She spoke.
So we got one.
Yeah. We have one.
Pushing, Joe.
Carlson's going for the record. Shortest meeting.
Small timeout here.
Meet your saints.
Yeah, that's what he said.
I think Roy had the shortest meeting.
Last one of the year, one on the fall.
Did he?
Oh.
If you guys want me to, I'll sing and dance.
Here we go.
Jacqueline, you're up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Jarque and I'm a journalist here in Springfield, Illinois, and I come today to introduce my brand-new media project. It's called SpeakTruthToPowerNetwork.com. I've been a journalist for 35 years and I'm coming next year and I will be retiring. And my passion project is becoming a publisher and it will be powered under the publishing company EndiGraph. EndiGraph, you may know- company EndyGraph. EndyGraph, you may know, also is the publisher of a couple of other companies here. One is, I think it's called Culture Hub in Chicago. Another one's called The Tribe in Chicago, and is one company that's here in Springfield, Illinois. The reason why I decided to publish this is because in Springfield, Illinois, we know that we are facing a lot of challenges, and these challenges have to be addressed collectively. And as a journalist, we are here to not only be a community member, but also to talk about the truth, and also to help raise voices. And here in Springfield, I found that there are a lot of underserved voices that are not being amplified. So, I wanted to take my resources as a retired individual and bring that here and bring this format here in Springfield, Illinois. Truth to power is a phrase that was brought about by Bayer Ruston. Bayer Ruston is an individual who was prominent in the civil rights movement. He was the principal organizer and activist and chief organizer of the March on Washington. Let me get there. Ruston's activism was rooted in his belief in nonviolent protest and grassroots organizing. He was influenced by Mahatma Gandhi's principles of nonviolence and was a key figure in the civil rights movement, working behind the scenes to mobilize activists and create coalitions for social change. Speaking truth to power is often associated with Ruston, emphasizing the importance of challenging authority and advocating for justice even in the face of opposition. Ruston's advocacy for speaking truth to power highlights several key aspects. Accountability. Ruston believed that it is essential to hold those positions of authority accountable for their actions and policies. Courage. The act of speaking truth to power requires courage, as it often involves confronting difficult truths and challenging societal norms. Collective action. Ruston emphasized the power of collective action in bringing about change. He believed that by coming together and raising collective voices, communities could challenge injustice and solve problems together. So, today I am here just to introduce my platform, which will be launching during Kwanzaa Week. Kwanzaa is a cultural celebration that started in nineteen sixty-six, and it is December twenty-sixth through January first of every year. It's something that I celebrated. I am a child of an activist, and my mom retired as an attorney in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. But I also have roots in southern, in Illinois and Cairo, also in Chicago. So, I will be launching it here in Springfield. I will be celebrating December thirtieth at the library with Erica Austin's Kwanzaa Celebration. And I also wanted to let you know that I will also be taking my place in the media circle here in the City Council meetings. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
That's all who signed up. All right. Seeing there's nothing else to come before this committee, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Happy Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Have a good holiday, everyone.